I want to take this time to welcome everyone to our November 6 zoning hearing. At this time, we normally would, and we will, ask Pastor Chip Paul of the Burnt Hickory Baptist Church, he's going to come forth and lead us in prayer. I want us all to keep in prayer the Judge Harris Heinz, who passed away this week, and this morning, one of the county's attorneys that we've known for a long time, John Moore, passed away, so keep his family in your prayers. So with that, Pastor Fe would lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you for this day. God, we thank you that you have given us an opportunity to wake and to walk with you today. God, we pray that today in everything that we do, that we may bring glory to your name, that we may show love in the same way that you have shown us love, that we may honor you as you have given us this opportunity to walk with you. God, we start off this meeting today praying and asking you for direction, asking for you to be a part of everything that we do in this meeting. That, God, that in every decision that we make, that we'll make it in a way that we know that we want to honor you, that we want to bring glory to your name. God, we thank you that we have this opportunity to meet. We thank you for the freedom that has been given us to make the decisions, to be put into places of service that you have called us to. May we serve in a powerful way. God, may you be with us today. May you walk with us, may you lead us, may you guide us. God, I also pray that today, that we would take advantage of the freedoms that we have been given to vote. God, may we not take that as something lightly, but God, may we step up and may we take advantage of that freedom that we've been given in this nation, to be an influence in those that have the opportunity to govern over us. God, may you lead us today in this meeting, may you bless this meeting, may you be honored in this meeting. It is in your name we pray, amen.
And at this time, those that are able, we stand for the pledge given by Officer Ott, representing the men and women in uniform.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Which is his case? All right, at this time, we have what we call the consent agenda, and I usually turn it over, and I am going to turn it over to John Peterson, I was going to say John Moore, John Peters. Johnny is going to tell us what the procedure is and how we go about it this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. This case will be called in numerical order. We ask that the applicant stand to signify that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call for any opposition to signify that they are here also, so they may be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, to present their testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and it's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the planning commission within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, the mask, one or more speakers come back to the podium for questions or comments, and after that, the board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. It's rezoning case Z-56, Wright Oakta LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice by staff and will not be heard. There are also a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held that will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-37 of 2018 Winchester Parkway LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the February 5, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-37 of 2018 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-49 of 2018 KO Management Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the December 4, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-49 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-63 of 2018 Lloyd Development Services. That case was continued by the staff until the December 4, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-63 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-64 of 2018 Northside Hospital Incorporated by Denton's US LP. That case was continued by the staff until the February 5, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-64 would not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, Z-67 Kent Aaronhold was on the agenda to be continued until December 4, 2018. We did get a letter in from the applicant asking this case be continued until the February 5, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so we would need a motion and vote by the board to continue this until the February 5 hearing date.
Since this is my case, I would make a motion that we continue this February. I have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor? And that's continued to the February meeting.
Thank you. Rezoning case Z-71 of 2018 Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the December 4, 2018 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-71 would not be heard today. Additionally, Madam Chair and Board, there are a number of cases on today's agenda which the applicant has recently asked the case to be continued. First case is rezoning case Z-61 EMAE LLC. The applicant has asked this case be continued until your next hearing date, and he is in the audience state if you have any questions.
That is, and if you want to come out, of course.
Give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Carlos Arenas, and I'm the applicant for EMAE LLC. I recently have met with the neighborhood and Mr. Galt here, and we're going to rework the cycle to accommodate her comments. So I would like to ask for a continuance for the next cycle to be able to do so.
Okay, thank you. And you're going to look at doing single-family detached?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make that clear to everybody, so, okay. With that, I'll make a motion that we continue Z-61 until the December hearing.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor? That's continued. Okay, John, what's next?
Thank you. Next case is rezoning case Z-68 Trayton Homes LLC. Okay. Mr. F.
Yes, on behalf of the applicant, we'd request that this case be continued to next month.
Okay, and I'd like to give a little explanation to people, and that is, the attorney's father passed away this morning, so he's not able to be here, and it's really not, you know, fair to the applicant to have somebody else try and step in and present the case who hasn't had any time to prepare it. I know there's people here who came for the case, and I apologize, I didn't know till just five minutes ago or so that this was happening. In fact, we were discussing up here, even as we were on, you know, how we were going to handle the case, so, you know. So I'm sorry, but we're going to continue it till December, so I'm going to make a motion that we continue Z-68 till our December hearing.
Thank you.
And that's continued.
There was one thing that just came up. People like to raise their hand on Z-68 for how many are here in opposition. We have quite a few.
So we'll get a count. Again, we do apologize, his father did pass away early this morning, so.
Let the record show there are 17 people here opposed to rezoning case Z-68, and the case was continued, so the case will be heard on December 4, 2018 in this room at 1:00.
Thank you again for your understanding. The next case, and y'all are free to leave.
Madam Chair and Board, I did get a letter for rezoning case Z-69 Brooks Chadwick Capital LLC. The applicant is asking this case be continued until the December date.
Okay, and that would be back to this board, and that would be Andy. Make a motion.
I'd like to move that we continue case C-69 until the December cycle, December 4, Planning Commission hearing.
We have a second. All those in favor of continuing? And that's continued till the December meeting.
Okay, and for those folks that were here, can you show hands, people here who were opposed to that zoning case?
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Let the record show there's two people here opposed to that. So that case will be heard on December 4, 2018 in this room at 9:00. Madam Chair and Board, I got one more case that is asked for a continuance. That's rezoning case Z-70, the Wasserman Group LLC. The applicant is trying to have dialogue with the neighborhood and would like to continue the case until the December hearing date.
Okay, and this is...
Yeah, I'll just make a motion that, I hope there aren't too many people in the audience for that. It was asked, the continuation was asked for yesterday, and I sent notice out to as many people as I knew of who might be coming. But I'd like to make a motion that we continue case Z-70 until next month.
Make a motion, second by Andy. All those in favor? Let's continue next month. Can we have a show of hands at anyone here that was opposed to this application?
Two.
So we had two. Thank you for your understanding on this. Okay. And John, where does that lead us?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to ask the people who are remaining in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone. The ringing does interfere with broadcast presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within the two years immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table in the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, we're ready to start the consent agenda.
What's our first question?
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for November 6, 2018. Rezoning case Z-65 Flannin Westbrook, request a rezoning from NS to CRC for the purpose of retail in landlot 212 of the 16th District. Property is located on the east side of Bellis Frey Road, south of Hawkins Store Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion to NRC subject to the following conditions: vinyl use of the property to be approved by the district commissioner. Prohibited uses are tattoo parlors, pool halls/rooms, and pawn shops. Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-65? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda, LEP 12 Spurs of Hope Incorporated, request rezoning, or, excuse me, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of equine therapy in landlot 715 of the 16th District. The property is located on the western terminus of Lower Lake Drive, west of Bellis Frey Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions: clients park on the property, hours of operation to be Tuesday through Saturday only, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., no signs to comply with all livestock code requirements, Fire Department comments and recommendations, and Stormwater Management comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 12? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Go back to this board. Any comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda to include C-65 and LEP 12.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Consent agenda is approved as presented.
Thank you. All those folks on consent agenda, just be back in this room in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners' final decision. And moving into the continued or held case agenda, rezoning case Z-26 Ostel Cosmetic Dentistry, request rezoning from NRC and LRO to RSL for the purpose of senior independent living in landlots 993 and 1006 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Ostel Road, south of Interstate Mill Road. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z-26 Ostel Cosmetic Dentistry? Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-26? Let the record show there's, let the record show the applicant is not present, and there's no one opposed, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you. Am I mistaken? He wasn't here last month.
Well, he wasn't here on one, but it turned out that he had sent in a letter requesting continuance on that one, but that was three months ago, actually. This case has been continued six months. I have a question for Debbie. Would you suggest, we haven't made any progress on this case, but, and without him showing up, and I haven't heard from him in months, more than three months, probably more like almost five, six months.
He's probably not very interested in pursuing it.
Right, exactly.
And the board has the, under 134, 121, you can dismiss it with prejudice, reject it, or continue it at your discretion.
Okay, so we could just go ahead and dismiss this case right now, then?
Dismiss it or reject it, yes.
Okay, because I think that's the appropriate thing to do, given that nothing's happened on this in six months. So I'll make a motion that we dismiss Z-26 with prejudice.
That is dismissed with prejudice.
Okay. Next case, rezoning case OSC 01 Province Homes LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to R-20 OSC for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in landlot 209 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Luther Road, and on the northwest and southeast sides of Midway Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to OSC 01 of 2018? Let the record show there's one person opposed. Would the applicant and the opposition please come forward?
My name is David Swales. I'm the developer and the applicant for this property. We've met with a lot of the contiguous homeowners. We thought we had resolved all our issues. I'm actually a little surprised that someone stood up, but, you know, we've submitted the plan, if there are much deliberation to try and make it efficient and attractive to the county, and we'd like it to be accepted as presented.
Thank you, David. We hear from the opposition at this time.
Good morning. I'm Charles Sprayberry, representing the Cobb County School District. Approval of this, excuse me, approval of this petition will cause concern for CCSD. It will result in an impact on enrollment for schools that are already significantly over capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission, or Board. I appreciate the work that the applicant has made in trying to work out the concerns that I had as an adjacent property owner. I think we have come to an agreement on the lot layout, which is one less lot than it was under the current zoning, and we have come to an agreement on buffers and fencing. There are still some issues that need to be worked out, so, but at this time, I have a conditional agreement with it pending the working out of the final documents. My sympathies go to Kevin Moore and his family and the loss of his dad, and I think, had it not been for John's extended illness, this would have probably already been worked out, but I'm fine with moving forward on a conditional approval based on what's been agreed on pending final approval. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else hearing this, and I expect to skip.
Okay, this is, this is my case. Just for the record, it's a 29.09 acre parcel who's zoned R-20 for 42 lots. What's been submitted is through several iterations, and I have to say that David Swales has been exceedingly willing to work with everybody in an amazing way. So I appreciate that, David, thank you. It's been submitted for 41 lots with a combination of R-20 lots, some six or seven in there in the balance, smaller OSC R-20 lots. It's a very nice plan. I think it's going to be a really nice development when it finally gets, you know, built out, and I'm looking forward to that happening. What I've, and I just want to emphasize that David Swales has gone way over the top, I believe, to work with all of the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhoods to make sure that the detention pond is not polluted in any way, and that the buffers are the way they need to be, and fences are going to be put up and so forth. I just would like to make a comment about the schools. Charles Sprayberry just got up and said that this is going to impact in a negative way the schools that this would send children to. I would just note that the schools that this would send children to have SPOS money and expansion is underway right now, first, that's the first point. The second point is this has been zoned Z-20, or R-20, I mean, for a long time, and so there's been ample time for the schools to prepare for this to be developed, and it's actually being developed with one lot less than what it's been zoned for. So there should be no negative impact on the schools that I can imagine. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the BOC of OSC-01, specific to the plan, subject to the letter stipulations received by the zoning department on November 5, 2018, the site plan received by the zoning department on November 5, 2018, with additional stipulations. The first is, there would be a six-foot black vinyl-clad chain-linked fence along the entirety of the northern border of this parcel that may be on the adjoining neighbor's property, it may be on this parcel, that's up to the neighbor, and in this case, Lindsay Tippens, and the developer to decide exactly where that'll go. Second, there would be a 35-foot maintained buffer along the entirety of the northern border of the parcel, and that fact shall be recorded in the deeds of lots 14 through 19, which are the ones that are contiguous to that northern border. The third additional stipulation is that architectural renderings and elevations are to be developed prior to the BOC hearing on this case in two weeks, and to be reviewed as appropriate with the, with all interested parties. Stipulation number six needs to be modified, and stipulation number six in the stipulation letter from Kevin Moore needs to be modified to reflect three-sided architecture. The last comment is all staff comments, not otherwise in conflict, would apply to this. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Call the question. That is approved, five to zero. Oh, I'm sorry, four to zero.
Okay, moving on. Rezoning case Z-62 McConnell Green 2 LLC, request rezoning from R-30 to RSL for the purpose of a non-supportive residential senior community in landlots 83 and 84 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Lost Mountain Road, south of Dallas Highway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-62? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there's 18 people here in opposition to rezoning case Z-62.
All right, good morning. For the record, my name is Parks, Parkland Law Firm, I'm Sam's Larkin, Huff &amp; Valley.
Parks, hold on for one second. All those folks wishing to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in. Sorry, Parks.
No problem. For the record, my name is Parks, Southland Law Firm, I'm Sam's Larkin, Huff &amp; Valley, and I represent McConnell Green, also known as Winsong Properties, in relation to this rezoning application that's before you today. This is an addition to an existing development that Winsong has at the intersection of Corner Road and Lost Mountain Road, and it is a logical extension of it. And I left the aerial up, so you can see, if you pull out just a little, one here out, you can kind of get real context of the property we're talking about. And if you look at the grading that's close to Lost Mountain Road, that is currently a road that ends into what would be a cul-de-sac, and the developer has been able to acquire the property to, or put under contract the property to the north. It's approximately a six-acre tract, which is outlined there in yellow, and just to simply extend that cul-de-sac northward, and I'll add an additional 17 homes on that site. The things that are key in considering this case is, number one, you're adding on to an existing very successful development. One of the things I want to point out very quickly is that this is selling at a rate of five homes per month, which is a very, very strong sales rate. They've already had 30 sales in the neighborhood. So if there's any question about the need for this market, and, you know, that answers that question solidly, and it is not just a want, it is a need. I mean, when we, in the 80s and 90s, owned all the suburban family neighborhoods out in West Cobb, what happens 10, 20, 30 years later? People age, and they need places that serve their, what they have to have at that stage of their life. So there's a huge need here. So this is filling that need in a logical and appropriate location. You can see, as I said, this is moving that development closer to the Activity Center, closer to the signalized intersection of Lost Mountain, Mars Hill, and Dallas Highway. Again, a very logical extension of that. The density of the proposed development is 2.88 units per acre, but I really want to focus a little bit on what we talk about when we talk about density and what that means. The number of homes are 17. These will be two-bedroom homes, 40% of them are single people, the other are two people. So if we're talking density, we're talking about how many people are there. You're also looking at the square footage of the homes. I mean, they're around 2,000, a little less than 2,000 square feet. So comparing this to a single-family neighborhood where you have four- and five-bedroom homes, you know, 3,500, 4,000 square feet, and a family living in there, so you can't just compare a number of units and look at it, because the whole point of zoning is determining the impact on the surrounding area. And so 17 RSL homes has a different impact than 17 single-family homes, square footage-wise, number-of-people-wise. You know, it's just logical that 40% of these people, homes are going to have one person in them, so very, very different impact. The, go through the, again, you can see it's existing, it's an expansion of the McConnell Green development, moving closer to the Activity Center, and this is the layout. What we've done is extend that cul-de-sac northward, double-o the street. I know some of the comments from the neighbors is going to be, when we had the zoning on the property to the south, we had a whole lot of land to deal with. We were able to move... we had a whole lot of land to deal with. We were able to move stuff around. And because of the width between the power line and the road, we single-loaded that section of the road coming up there. But as we go into this new property, it's 5.9 acres, we have a, have a detention bond, and the, the homes are double-loaded on there. As you'll see in a second, the homes are low-profile. It won't create a sea of roofs. And we have a 50-foot buffer, 25-foot planted buffer, and a three-board fence along that section of roadway. So that is extremely, will be attractive and, and as you drive down Lost Mountain Road. Couple of points I want to make about Lost Mountain Road that is very important in this case. Number one is we have and will be participating and helping with Cobb DOT on the intersection improvement that is greatly needed in this area. So we are going to settle side property that will be available for that very needed roads improvement. The other thing that's not immediately apparent in this case, and I think is extremely important when you talk about the density that we're asking for and how appropriate it is, is the fact that by incorporating this property in this existing development, you do away with a curb cut out onto Lost Mountain Road. So, you know, the less curb cuts in this very congested area, the better. And if it was not accessed through our development, it would have, it has an absolute right to have a driveway onto Lost Mountain Road. So I think that is something that is very, very important when you consider this case. Here are the homes that are currently in this development. As you can see, they're very attractive. Attention to detail that Windsong is known for, and they're lower profile. They're not a tall, you know, typical single-family home. And they will be very attractive. And as I said, you cannot argue with the need of this product in the area. We have submitted a letter dated October 31st, which details the conditions that we will agree to becoming a condition on the grant of the rezoning. A couple of things I want to point out in that is that the zoning to, on the main development granted a density of 2.08 units per acre. The density on this one section here would be 2.88 units per acre. But when you combine them together and look at it as a whole, the density is going up by .09 units per acre. So what we're saying is, is a .09 units per acre worth being able to incorporate this development into an existing development, not having another curb cut on Lost Mountain Road, get any right-of-way that's needed for the intersection improvement. Those are all things that are considered here in putting a product that is greatly needed in the area. So again, I think I've repeated it a couple of times, but .09 units per acre is the overall increase in density on the development. It will be incorporated in the existing homeowners association. The, we've got a detail on section paragraph number nine on the landscaping and the buffering along Lost Mountain Road. And when you put this in context of the entire development, and you understand the quality that Windsong brings to the area, the attention to detail they have for their market is just, you know, second to none. And the pictures show that. And being able to acquire this piece, six acres closer to the intersection, closer to the activity center, all the trade, the balancing of all this, and, and the reality for any development is you've got to have a certain yield to be able to make that all work. And the trade-off here, one of the trade-offs is not having an independent access to Lost Mountain Road if this property was developed separately. And so it, it is exactly what you would expect in this area. And so we ask that you approve this. And I know that some of the neighbors here are going to say that we didn't honor the agreements on the property to the south. We did honor every one of the agreements that we had on the property to the south. This is expanding this development northward in a logical fashion, and overall only increases the overall density of .9 units per acre. And .09, excuse me. And, and the density on this is only .2.8 units per acre, which is a reasonable density. Again, when we're talking density, if you don't recognize that an RSL is very different than a single-family home, you're not looking at what the purpose of zoning is, which is to look at how that impact is on the surrounding areas. And so this density is very, very appropriate. So I appreciate your time. I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Thank you for your consideration of this application.
At this time, we'll hear from the opposition.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Pereira. I am a resident, and I live about half-mile from the property McConnell Green. I'd like to start by showing you a picture. I don't know if I show it, or do I just press this button? There we go. Okay. This is the original plan for Z75 of 2016, which is now McConnell Green. Because the area was zoned VLDR, neighbors were very concerned and opposed the development. A petition actually went out, and an opposition got over 1,200 signatures. We realized that the area was inevitably going to be developed. So I think it was over four or five months and a lot of negotiation. We worked with Windsong to create a property with a lower density, large buffers, and attractive amenities. You can see that in the next picture. The density went from 3.1 to 2.08. In this next picture, you can see them side by side, 145 homes down to 97. That's quite a difference. The development, I'm happy to say, is selling very well, and we'd like to believe it's in part because of the hard work that we did to ensure that the property was in keeping with the look and feel of the area, and also the attractive amenities that we asked be put as part of the senior active adult community. One of the stipulations that we had asked for was that no homes would abut Lost Mountain Road, so that as you enter the residential area off of Dallas, off of Dallas Highway, you didn't have to look at a sea of roofs. This picture shows the, the proposal for Z62. And you'll notice that Windsong is proposing an additional 17 homes at a density of 2.88. I don't know if they thought we all moved away or something, but unfortunately Windsong is ignoring the stipulations of Z75 and putting a high density with a string of homes along Lost Mountain Road. I believe that road has plans to be widened, which means that those homes will be even closer to Lost Mountain Road. We did not want to have the look of a sea of roofs, which this property shows Windsong's development Bel Air, which is off Bullard Road. You can clearly see that it is an eyesore to have a sea of roofs along a main country, in a country setting, along a main road. The developer and his attorney are trying to spin that if incorporated into McConnell Green, the density only goes up to 2.14 or .09, whatever he said. However, the truth is that Windsong is just being greedy. And he's trying to get around stipulations established in Z75 of 2016. If this property is going to be part of McConnell Green without its own independent access, they need to adhere to all of the stipulations of that development. We respectfully ask that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission. My name is Eric Burt, and I've been part of a community-led team that Tanya was mentioning for the original Z75 zoning request in 2016. You know, this group got together, knew that something would eventually move into what was essentially a pasture. But what we really tried to do was, you know, get an undertaking that strikes a fair and balanced approach with what that would actually look like. So we canvassed different communities and, you know, in an attempt to really kind of preserving that look and feel of, you know, basically centralizing the units, being able to still preserve a pastoral, farm-like community, and ultimately bring the main thoroughfare, Lost Mountain Road, out of the equations and actually seeing the development. So having the adequate buffer. So that was a very strong negotiating point that we wanted to have put in the Z75 stipulations. Now, as it concerns Z62, you know, this request is not anywhere in alignment with what was stipulated and worked out over months with both the developer and the community at large. You know, the, the density in Z62 and the absolute lack of green space, you know, are not in alignment with what we struck for the ideal look and feel of putting a senior-type living right in West Cobb. Yeah, additionally, you know, there were a number of responses that were sent to, you know, the planning board and the commissioners. And there was a mail that was forwarded and copied to, I think, Mr. Huff, the developer's attorney. And, you know, in response, it was just a one-liner that said, "Any good deed does not go unpunished." You know, that statement is disingenuous at best and snarky, to say the least. It just really goes to show some of the contempt that's maybe there, leftover from Z75, but it just doesn't look like taking the best considerations of West Cobb constituents at heart. So in closing, I would just ask the planning committee to not approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing's ended. The public hearing is closed, and it's back to Skip.
Okay. Where to start? When I first looked at this, I thought this is going to be an easy addition onto what is a very successful and can become a very successful RSL in the form of McConnell Green. One of the biggest issues that I worry about in West Cobb, and we hear about it, we haven't heard about it so much today, but we usually hear about it in almost every one of our zonings, has to do with traffic. When I look at an RSL, Parks didn't talk about the, the impact on traffic that an RSL has. But it's pretty well established that because of the lower density of people living in the homes, plus the fact that many of them are retired and they can work on, they can travel on a different schedule, the traffic patterns of people who typically live in an RSL are roughly a third of, you know, the traffic intensity, the amount of traffic offered to the road is roughly a third of what a single-family dwelling generates. Single-family dwelling generates in the vicinity of 10-plus car trips per day, which when I first heard that, I said, "That's mind-boggling. That's not me." But then I started thinking about it with my teenage son and my wife and me, and pretty soon you can see that, you know, that's pretty much what it is. In a, in an RSL, it's one-third of that. And plus, you got the added benefit that the traffic typically is not during the rush hour when we feel the brunt of that traffic the most. It's during the non-peak times. So when I look at this development, I see that we're getting, you know, this is Z62. I see that we're getting closer to the commercial node. Good planning principles, I'm not a planner, but I've been exposed to it from the Cobb County government staff, who is steeped in planning technology and principles and best practices and so forth. Good planning says have a step down from commercial nodes into the residential. Or conversely, work to get some sort of a step up as you move from residential towards the, the commercial nodes. In this case, the one we have at the intersection of Dallas Highway and Lost Mountain Road and Mars Hill Road. When I look at what the alternatives could be in here, this is, in the future land use map, it's VLDR, very-low-density residential, which specifically precludes RSL. That was the case for the existing McConnell Green development. At this point, I'm not sure why it hasn't happened, but that parcel should be designated as LDR now, low-density residential since McConnell Green went in as an RSL. That implies that what's between it and the commercial node needs to change. And, and so I would not be surprised if for that remaining large, open parcel there, that we're going to see proposals for possibly apartments, for low-rise office, for more commercial possibly, things that are more dense than single-family dwellings, even though it's zoned R30. When I look at this and I see LRO as a possible alternative, commercial as a possible alternative, RSL being proposed, I see something that is much preferable, much more preferable than, than any of the alternatives from, from the point of view of the impact on traffic. I'm sensitive to the agreements of the past. I know that the community worked very hard for a very long time with Windsong and Steve Remain and Parks Huff to accomplish the density and the, and the other aspects of the agreement that have resulted in McConnell Green. I understand that, and I appreciate that. And I also understand that this can feel like a betrayal, that it's just a little extension, but they want a lot more. I understand that. But when you stand back and you look at it and you realize that we need to have a step-up transition as we move towards a node, we're not going to get with this a curb cut into Lost Mountain Road. The traffic is going to be contained within the development. It overall makes sense. Having said that, when we finally, if, if this moves ahead, that parcel will be re-designated LDR, low-density residential. The maximum density for low-density residential is 2.5 units per acre. So having said that, I'm thinking that the 17 lots that have been proposed ought to be reduced to 15 to make it, to make it comply with the 2.5 units per acre that LDR would be. And otherwise, I'm fine with, with the double-loading on, on this extension of the road, recognizing that the extension of that cul-de-sac has moved away from Lost Mountain relative to where it started down within McConnell Green. So there is more space there. There's more separation. There's the, the 50-foot acquisition that's going to go to Cobb DOT for the expansion of the road, and then there's a 25-foot buffer on top of that. So I'm, I'm inclined to make a motion that we approve this, but with a slightly reduced density down to 15.
Have any other comments?
I'll just add a couple. Looks like Lost Mountain Road's defined as an arterial. And normally, because of exactly what Parks Hough said about the impact of RSL versus a normal subdivision, that, that land use plan that Skip was just mentioning of 2.5 units per acre doesn't really apply to RSL. The code would actually allow an RSL to go up to five units an acre. So I want people to kind of understand that even 2.88 that was proposed for this additional parcel is not high-density in any, it's not even medium-density, really. Looking at it, it's still, in my mind, a low-density. The other thing I was going to say, and it's not before us, so we couldn't do it. All we can do is move forward what's before us. But maybe the applicant might consider coming back with both of these as another business item for a modification to maybe move some of these lots of these lots that are along Lost Mountain to the open space that's being created on the other side of that road where there's showing parking spaces, just to move more rooftops away from Lost Mountain Road. It looks like they could probably get four, maybe four units or so on that side of the road and take them away, not, not change the density, but just, you know, if the community's desiring less rooftops along that section. Now, I don't know if there's any land reasons, grading, you know, all of that that would prevent that, so I don't want to say, that hasn't really been looked at, but it's just a suggestion that I have. So those are my comments.
Any other comments? Back to you, Skip.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. Make a motion that we recommend approval of Z75 to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the letter stipulations received by the zoning department dated October 31st, 2018, the site plan received by the zoning department dated November 1st, 2018. I believe that's the operative site plan, right, Parks? Just nod your head, thank you. Reduce the lot count from 17 to 15, and redesign the site plan for the BOC hearing, and then all staff comments not otherwise in conflict. That's my motion.
Motion. We have a second? All those in favor of the motion? And that's approved, four to zero. All right, John.
I believe that concludes your agenda, Madam Chair.
Really? Oh, my goodness. I'm 52. Okay, we have some business here to take care of. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? No? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor? The minutes are approved, four to zero, as presented. And that concludes our public hearing for today. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It is election day.